Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of May 18th. We are being livestreamed and it is recorded. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. A moment of silence tonight is for our graduating seniors and our new retirees who all start a new chapter in their life. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to recall that which stands one mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we have the roll call, Mr. Shae?
Present.
Mr. Magditch?
Present.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Here.
Please silence all your electronic devices.
You too, board president.
Yeah, me too. Sorry, I forgot. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written.
So moved.
Second? Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
I invite the staff in community recognition and Mr. Gregory.
All right, thank you. Well, hey, I know we've got a couple of you. I know you can hear me okay, I hope. I know I just startled you. I got a big mouth here sometimes. Anyway, we have several people that we would not want to acknowledge for their retirements, and this has been obviously a crazy year. Typically, as people retire, we try to bring them here throughout the course of the year. If they do leave throughout the course of the year, and we have a couple that have retired earlier in the year, but because of COVID and all the situations that we've been going through, we weren't able to do that. But we did invite folks to come back tonight. So we do have four here tonight that we want to honor. But before I get to those guys, I do also want to read the names of the folks that are retiring from around the district this year. Pam Avery Ray is retiring from the Transportation Department with 25 years' experience with the district, so congratulations to Pam. Judy Casali is retiring as a school psychologist, been with us for 19 years, so congratulations to Judy. Nancy Coy retired earlier in the year. She retired from Coy Elementary with 25 years. Janet Free retired from the Transportation Department, bus driver, after 31 years, so congratulations to Janet. Vicky Laurel, as many of you know, was the transportation supervisor for many years, along with the food service supervisor for years prior to that, or after the transportation. She retires with 26 years in the district, so congratulations to Vicky. Karen Lewis is currently a teacher at Coy Elementary, and she's retiring from a number of spots around the district as a teacher with 22 years, so congratulations to Karen. Keith Dunbar is a social studies teacher here at Clay High School, retiring after 33 years with us, so congratulations to Keith. Brenda Rataball is retiring after 35 years with us, teaching mathematics here at Clay High School. She's not here because she is coaching softball, which she's a state record holder and has a number of, like, I think, close to over 500 some-plus wins. So congratulations to Brenda moving on, and she is going to continue to coach for us for at least the next couple of years, I hope. Flo Ross was a paraprofessional in the district, around the district for 18 years, so congratulations to Flo. And Amy Lucas was also a paraprofessional, and congratulations to Amy at her retirement after nine years with the district. So I'm just going to kind of invite individuals just to maybe come up here in this little section here, and I'm just going to say a couple of things. And if you want to speak and say something, you can. You certainly don't have to, but we want to recognize you. And we'll start with Jennifer. Come on up, Jennifer, Mrs. Pinson, right off the bat. So congratulations. Jennifer was with us for 15 years, and I know Jennifer because we hired her 15 years ago. I remember the interview specifically. I remember the old Coy, or Clay Elementary that we started together in and that we were over. And so Jennifer has been a counselor, loved kids, worked with kids, worked with all those agencies that all counselors work with from the time she got here. Her background in social work and all the mental health, she was kind of a pioneer for us in that whole mental health world because we really didn't have a lot of that kind of experience in the district until Jennifer came to us. And I know she was very excited to work with kids every single day, but also excited to retire and move on in her second life. So Jennifer, appreciate you coming back, because she also was able to retire earlier in the school year, so we were happy for her on that. But she was able to make it back tonight, and I don't know if you want to introduce maybe who's with you, and if you want to say a couple of words you want to. Is that good? Go ahead.
I'm never a little lost for words. I'm honored that my husband joined me this evening. My husband Eric Dr. Pinson is here. Thank you for being here with me today. And it is so good to see all of you. I've missed you. I honestly have to tell you, I didn't have a day, even at the worst of times, that I didn't want to come to school. And I thank you for all of that because you guys were my backbone. And so when things got ugly and tough and I couldn't find TM, I found you. So, but thank you. Thank you for a great time. Thank you for the honor of being here and retirement, as I highly recommend.
Yeah, good. All right, congratulations, Jennifer. Thank you. I see Doug Haynes here. Did I say that right? Haynesley, I didn't say that right. He's way back here in the corner. This is kind of nice having this portable mic. I may use this more often. So Doug, you were with us on my notes for 13 years. I hope that's accurate, but it could rob that. But you worked out in the bus garage and maintenance department, working on our fleet for all those years, and we can't thank you enough for all the hard work that you put in and appreciate you so much coming out tonight. And I don't know if you would like to say a couple of things or introduce who you're with? Is that okay?
Yep, all right. Good. Well, my wife Sue came with me tonight. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to work with Oregon Schools. It was a change to come to work in a transportation department for me, and there was never a dull moment. And I thank you again.
Well, we congratulate you. Thanks for coming out tonight. All right. We have here with us is Deb Tote. Deb's been with us for 22 years, and I don't know all of our positions, but I know the last many years have been the librarian, working out with kids at Star Elementary. And I know she brought so much joy, so much connection to reading. The library is phenomenal. She left it in absolute great shape for whoever's next in line to take over that reading with kids. And we want to thank you for 22 years for supporting the district in all the capacities that you did. And would you maybe introduce just who came with you?
Hi, I'm my husband, Baham. He's been my support for almost 50 years, so yeah, we're going to enjoy this journey together, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb, so much for being here. All right, and last but certainly not least, Patty Warren. Patty has been with us 18 years, and the reason I know that is because we were reminiscing just the other day about she came in the same year I did. So 18 years ago, we both kind of came into the district in different capacities, but I was a special ed director at that time, and Patty was working in the district, and I got to know her, and we've had a great relationship ever since. And Patty's been through how many different positions, right? And how many different teachers, and how many different things, and she has done that the entire time with a smile, always, no matter how difficult or how crazy the situation, that little laugh is what I've heard. So congratulations for all your years, Patty, and we appreciate you being here. Would you like to say anything, or I don't want to put you in so you don't have to?
Sure.
All right, good.
I just want to thank everybody, and I've met a lot of great people. I've seen a few go and a few stay. And whenever I had a rule issue, I always went to my main guy here, because we go way back, what he said. Thank you all.
I got that.
This is more? Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for our employees. We wish you well in your retirement. There's nothing like it. Okay, item six is public participation at board meetings. Do you have any cards? Yes, everyone, feel free to leave.
Thank you, everyone.
We have no cards, so we can move away from public participation. Item seven is our treasurer's report.
All right, Mrs. Mulner, thank you. In your packet, you should have a couple things. The first one is the actual little report, and behind it, attached to it should be the updated permanent improvement. And then there is an updated, the true cash report and the revenue, revow, sorry, that has been updated for the updates to five-year forecast. And then attached to that, even further than that, is the detailed kind of five-year forecast. I am asking that because the finance committee does not have a chance to meet, and I would ask that we hold off on approving the appropriation measure at this time. I'm sorry, appropriation, the five-year forecast. We can meet later this month, earlier, but that way everybody has a chance to really absorb it. It's been a fairly crazy time. And I also just, so I'll go through my report. Some things that have hit the five-year that's pretty exciting, really. Yesterday, I got the file numbers for the insurance renewal. And our 21-22 medical insurance, we've been offered, and we aren't settled yet completely, obviously, the union has it because we might have the chance to carry this. The union will have a meeting to discuss it. But upfront, we've been offered a reduction of 7.23% for the next two years. It's a flat rate for 24 months, which, while we've never had a flat rate for 24 months at this reduction, considering that our renewal started out at 33% increase, we've had a very unhealthy year. So this was clearly a lot of work by a broker. He counted a lot of numbers, and we've worked pretty hard on this. But this has been included, we know we did get it yesterday. That's part of the delays on some of these things. Just a summary of what we have to date. True cash balances, our trends are already very encouraging. Remember, that's the number of days this district could operate at the end of the school year. The Department of Education recommends you be between 30 to 90, and they consider that a healthy balance. And as you can see, we range, we start next, this year, about 157, and at the end of fiscal year '25, we're talking about 70. So we're pretty strong, obviously, reductions that were made after the failure of the main levy, along with, let's be honest, relief provided through ESAR funding. We were able to transfer some funds with that. We'll have more detail on that in the coming weeks, so everybody can see how that did relieve quite a bit. But a lot of the purchasing we had to do to get kids back at school, the supplies, really did help us a great deal. And then I always force you guys to look at this, but forecast is a trend, 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 trend. And we get all whipped up about this number or that, but the reality is, where's the cash balance at the end of the day? Yes, we are spending more than we're taking in, so that is a concern, but our cash balances are strong. We're still ending it up with $10 million, so with the general fund. So we have a strong forecast at this time, again, thanks to the measures, other measures. Attached to this, you'll find the appropriation measure. The only change on that appropriation measure at this time is the general fund, the budget, so it matches exactly with the proposed five-year forecast. And under the area for the treasures, there are a couple of transfers, and I want you to understand what they are. The first one I received from the SCACIT athletic director. Last year's fundraising from, it was a wrestling tournament that goes into the Barkham Scholarship account. That's the $1,500. And then we also, and this also changed the forecast, we did receive the settlement for fiscal year 1819 for Medicaid, and it came in at $199,000. The other transfer is to take that from the general fund into the PI fund, which is a very consistent procedure we've been doing. This is one-time money. We have no idea if we're going to get it from year to year, so we put it into the PI because that's the one-time spending amount. So that's what those are. Some miscellaneous items, I just wanted to let you know, A, our audit did go out to bid, and they had the meeting where they asked questions of the, I guess, whatever we thought to be, and so that, you know, but I have no other information at this time. Our software was updated. I guess this is our third week with our new software, so it's all going well, but, you know, sometimes it takes us a little longer till we figure out how we're using it, but it's great. I'm pretty excited about it. And the last thing that happened just this week, we have a place now, and it can be used by the high school, too, and other fundraisers, and I'm real excited about this. It's a new process where you can set up a link for special kinds of, well, in this case, it's for a camp, for a basketball camp. Mr. Kennedy was our, I didn't mean to call him that, but that's what he was. And what it does is it puts all the information out. It puts out the, you can put your signup sheets, you can put your approval for the parent approval, you can pay it. It's free to the parents. I mean, we're picking up the charges again in the effort to eliminate cash, but we're real excited about it. It looks pretty sharp. So that's something for the future fundraising, maybe our classes would like to do some of that in fundraising to the future. So that's all I've got. The other items are things for you to review as you review the five-year. Okay? Unless there are questions, that is my report.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report without the five-year forecast. Do you need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
I have no reason for executive session. Any other member of the board? Okay, we can remove that. Consent agenda. Are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing that, a motion is needed to vote on those consent agenda items. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
And Mr. Gregory, would you like to introduce our new employees?
Yes, thank you very much. We do have, I think, five or six of the individuals here tonight. Very excited about these new folks coming to the district, bring a lot of new energy, different perspectives for sure. So I'm just going to kind of go down my list here, and Marissa, would you stand up, please? Marissa Bowles? She is going to be our new math instructor here at Clay High School, and we're very excited. Marissa's brand new, so she's going to be her first time teaching, but we obviously went through the interview selection process. She rose to the top. So, so Marissa, congratulations and welcome to Clay High School.
Thank you.
Yep. Charles, where are you at? You're in the back there. So Charles Vogel, the fourth, is going to be our new school psychologist. He will be joining us here this summer. Very excited to have him. He had been connected to us a ways back through an experience, so obviously, we're very excited to have Charles, and he's here with his fiancee tonight. So congratulations, Charles. We're excited to get you going.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you for being here. Let's see here, I want to make sure I don't miss anybody. All right, Catherine. Catherine, again, is going to be our new marketing instructor, sitting right next to our previous marketing instructor, Bailey. So Catherine, we're very excited. She's also going to be brand new, coming out of marketing education. So we're excited to have her and lots of energy and lots of great ideas that came out. So she's got a great mentor, too, so we feel really good where the program is and where it's going to be going. So congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, and then Joshua. So Josh, Joshua, I got to get to your name, your last name. Gotcha. Let's see, Joshua is, what's your last name here? Oh, Shannon, thank you. Joshua's going to be our new transportation supervisor, and we are super excited about what he brings to the table. Josh has been, he's a resident of Oregon, has been sub-driving for us for the last couple of years, but worked in private industry, in the restaurant world for a whole number of years prior to doing what he's doing now. And his relationship with Terry, I don't know if you're out there, in transportation, and his way about him, working with people, and his understanding of how everything kind of fits together, he rose to the top in the interview process, and we're very excited to have somebody that cares about people as much as Joshua does. So Joshua, congratulations. We're going to be working with you a lot. You've got a big job ahead of you, but I know you're up for it.
Thank you.
So congratulations. And tonight, we also through Jennifer Kalerick, has been with us a long time as a teacher and a special ed teacher on assignment, which she's been doing the last four or five years, working with Mrs. Kosek. And tonight, she was hired as our new special ed supervisor, and she's got a big job ahead of her. She's going to support our Wind Center kids and kids around the entire district. But she is more than ready to step into this new administrator's role, and I can't be more excited to have somebody that we can promote into something like that, that I know is going to do a fantastic job. So congratulations, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Did I miss anybody? I don't think I did. So congratulations, and don't feel you have to stay the rest of the meeting, but we appreciate you coming out tonight and be ready to go. Summer will go like that.
Enjoy it while you can. Okay, so moving on to new business, we have some SDF trips. Want the motion to approve these trips? Volleyball to Cedar Point Convention Center, volleyball to Premier League in Mami, and wrestling to Central Michigan University. These are team tournaments paid for by the respective teams. We just need a motion to approve them. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item B is disposal of equipment and materials. We need a motion to dispose of a Casio keyboard from Jerusalem Elementary. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Okay, well, Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item C, under new business, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. The Toledo Flower Mill donated 2,800 masks to Star Elementary School and for students and staff. The Poodak family donated masks to Coy and Star Elementary with an estimated value of $1,680. And Brian Guyris donated $60 towards the repair of two Tramon's at Eisenhower. Now you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item D is a motion to approve the list of the Clay High School graduates pending fulfillment of state and local requirements. There are 268 of them this year. So I need a motion?
So moved. Second?
Right here.
Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item E is a bus bid resolution, whereas the Oregon Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of three 71-passenger conventional-type school buses. Therefore, we wish to participate and authorize Meta Solutions to advertise and receive bids on the set for CF as per specification submitted for the cooperative purchase of three 71 S interconventional school buses. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Under discussion, this is within the regular rotation of purchases of school buses?
It's paid for primarily out of PI.
Yes.
Any other? Okay, roll calls.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item F is college credit plus agreement. We need a motion to approve the following college credit plus agreement for the 21-22 school year. It is with the University of Toledo. A copy of the agreement has been distributed to the board. Now you have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item G is the public records training. The Board of Education appoints the treasurer, CFO, Jane Fruit, as its designated for the public records training. I need a motion to appoint her?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Under discussion, we have to have either appoint Jane or all of us take the training. So it's easier to appoint Jane, and then if we want to take the training, we can. So, okay, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item H, I am not going to read all that, the entire thing. It's a resolution authorizing and declaring perpetual easement for utility and drainage purposes in connection with Permanent Parcel Number 4427081. And that's the property on South Wayne Road that is being sold for the new fire house there. So it just gives them the use of that property for drainage and electrical and so forth. So I need a motion, please?
So moved. Second?
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item I is about our insurance. We need a motion to provide a one-time credit of $100 to all staff members for their medical insurance premiums. This will be available to all staff members eligible to take medical insurance with Oregon City Schools. For employees who are not on district medical plan, they will need to provide proof of payment towards another insurance plan to be reimbursed for the same $100. This would be paid out of ESAR One funds, and it is a thank you for all our employees for everything they did for us during the COVID era. They certainly have earned a reward. So I need a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mr. Shae?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes.
Item J is a textbook purchase. I need a motion to approve the purchase of math textbooks for grades 5 through 12 from McGraw-Hill in the amount of $267,000, I'm sorry, $260,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes, we're replacing all of our math textbooks. The others were approved previously. So this takes care of the grades 5 through 12.
And roll call?
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Magditch?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulner?
Yes. And we are bid to superintendent's report.
I do want to comment to the public and to our staff specifically about that insurance motion that the board just approved. Thank you to the board. This is something that came from the board as an idea. This is something that I fully support. Mrs. Fruit fully supports. And it's a small token of thank you, as Mrs. Mulner said, to everybody in the Oregon City Schools organization that works for us. And, you know, it's $100 off your insurance out of a paycheck. It's a true $100. It's not taxable. The way this was designed was to truly give our staff $100 to thank them for everything they've done. And so they'll be seeing that at some point. I'm not exactly sure which pay. Not to put Mrs. Fruit on the spot, but I will be making obviously the announcement to all staff tomorrow via email and letting them know what it means for them. But thank you. Again, that's a very, very nice thing. I don't know if we've ever done something like that, at least in my time here, so.
Could I interrupt you?
Yes, absolutely.
I do want you to know that other districts have done not exactly the same thing, but some districts have given gift cards and so forth to all their employees too. So we're within the bounds of what other districts do. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you so much. Okay, my superintendent's report, I just have about five updates here. One is just a quick graduation update. That is right around the corner. Believe it or not, next week is our last, well, this Friday is the last day for seniors, and next Friday is the last day for the 2021 school year for all kids. So that means a week later is graduation on June 6th. So thank goodness, everything has moved forward like we hoped. We are gonna hold that at 2 o'clock at Seagate Center. There was a lot of questions about what would happen now that the governor will have lifted the health orders as of June 2nd. So I just want everyone to know that we have talked to Seagate, and we're not going to be completely free of the requirements for our graduation ceremony. We were still going to require masks. This, again, is working with Seagate and their wishes for their center. Also, you know, the folks that are graduating in Huntington Center will have the same thing. But what they did do is they reduced the social distancing from 6 to 3 feet, which is allowing one extra ticket per family. So it doesn't sound like a lot, but every family will be allowed six tickets and, you know, to have a wonderful graduation. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there, make sure the board understood that. And I will be getting more information to all of you about where to park and those types of things, given everything that's going on down there as we get a little bit closer. But typically, you know, we try to, I try to arrive around 1 o'clock and just make sure everything goes well. You guys don't need to arrive necessarily that early, but we appreciate you being there and being a part of the ceremony. It's gonna look and feel like previous ones, except we're still kind of sorting through how much, you know, contact there'll be with the graduation books and also shaking hands, those types of things. So we may not do all of that, but we can certainly give a head nod and a congrats kind of thing. So any questions on graduation specifically? All right. I included on there, I wasn't sure if I had sent this out to everyone or not. So in case I didn't, I wanted you to see the tentative timeline for the performing arts studio put together by our architect Mike Rowe. And basically, it goes backwards from a potential board approval. Again, I'm not getting ahead of myself, but that's what we did. We looked at next October's board meeting and worked back. So take a look at that if you have any questions. And again, it's just the very first timeline. So given everything that needs to happen before that, I assume something will be adjusted along the way in that. But still very excited about that opportunity. I know there's a big show this weekend with our limelighters doing trek. So if you get a chance to come out Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, I think there's a few tickets left. I don't know how many, but there's a few. Okay, third one, I just want to give you an update. I will be working with a company called Impact America. They, well, let me put it this way. The owner of Impact America is the individual that we worked with back in 2006 to develop all our emergency operations plans that we have, both large-scale and in the classrooms and on transportation and the buses. Well, that was 2006. Lots changed since 2006. So there's some updates that we would like, I would like to take advantage of. He now has a company called Impact America. He was with the Department of Homeland Security back then. And so we met with some of his reps. I know him if we need to meet with him. But I'm looking into that right now. And basically, what it will do is, the one piece we don't have, very accessible and easy to understand, is the active shooter plans. And this is a new thing, right? We have a plan. The SROs, Dean and I, we meet on these things. We know what we're doing. But as people change out there in the police world and the fire world, they don't always know what these plans are. We don't have like one document that articulates where you go, where the staging areas are, the command posts, the rally points, the landing zones, reunifications and all that. We have it in-house, but we don't necessarily have a quick grab-and-go document to, that anyone can see and know exactly where to go. So I'm gonna be taking a look at more of that. We had like an initial meeting. So through the course of the summer, we're also going to be reaching out. I've reached out to the city to see if they have something. If they don't, maybe they want to partner with us. And we're also going to be reaching out to maybe some of the larger companies, like the hospitals and the VPs and those types of things, to look refining to see if they have something. They may already have it. I'm assuming they do. But sometimes a group rate can be a little bit better than an individual rate. So we are on top of that. I do have a safety meeting with the SROs tomorrow. It's been hit and miss for the year, but we're getting back to it and making that a priority. Any questions? Yeah.
Now, this is mainly for the documentation and our normal security safety committee that we have.
Yeah.
And the fire departments.
We're gonna, yes.
Oregon, the sheriffs.
Exactly. And I'm gonna bring that back next year more formally.
We, those bodies are gonna know, and I understand he's very good at documenting stuff, but the critical points where people have to leave and go to, I believe we need the internal.
So we met with Chief Bliss, Assistant Chief Bliss from the Oregon Police and the Chief and Assistant Chief from Oregon Fire the other day, and that we all met together and heard the presentation from these guys. So you are spot on, and we're gonna bring, we talked about bringing Jerusalem Township into that.
We're just coming.
Yep, and the sheriffs. We absolutely had all those same discussions about bringing that in. Like I said, we just wanted to see what this new company is kind of, well, it's not a new company now. It's been around for several years, but kind of new to us now, what they had to offer.
Can I ask you the individual as you're talking to?
Oh, yes, he, Hemaleski Ri- Richard? He is a former fire, I believe, chief from Slovenia? Or Springfield, maybe? I don't have his card. Yeah. And also a police officer, a retired police officer, I'm not gonna remember his name, Dolan? Does that sound right? Something Dolan? Yeah, okay. I have that. I'll give that to you though, the individuals. And actually, I was gonna ask you to be a part of that as well, once we get kind of moving forward, you and Mike, because of your backgrounds. So again, I just kind of put this out there that over the summer, I'd like to have a couple of meetings to see if this is where we want to go. And it's, you know, it's somewhat expensive, somewhere between 10 and 15 grand if we do it what I think is the right way. But we gotta decide what the right way is.
Chief, if it saves one person.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Toledo Public, they just finished the entire Toledo Public school system. They are doing a number of systems around the country, believe it or not. They're doing multiple, I mean, like double the size of Toledo Public in Texas. So there's a real market, obviously, for this right now. I think the products are phenomenal. And so I'll pull together a kind of a mini-meeting again, and we can go. I got some samples at my desk.
I think they were involved in it, but State Park and Natural Resources.
For our big meetings, absolutely.
Make sure that those people are still involved, because we do have a lot of land that.
Absolutely.
Can be utilized.
Yep. That, actually, we had really good involvement initially from the park folks, and then there was some retirements and stuff, and that kind of fell off. So maybe there's some new blood out there that we can get reconnected. Yeah. And I think we have a connection to the Sheriff's Department now, so I think maybe we can get a representative. I'm not sure, but I hope so. Maybe. Any other questions about that? All right. Yeah, no, great. So today, we've been, I know Don, Shavoni has been talking with Mr. Jerzky for a while on this and kind of deciding what to do. You know, we've been going back and forth. We've moved away, as you know, from MacBooks, Apple MacBooks, to like Chromebooks or a version, Lenovo, we use a different version, but Chromebooks. So obviously, a lot cheaper device. Certainly has been doing us well the last couple of years. Certainly did us well through the pandemic. So I got a call, and they came to a kind of a recommendation decision that they would like to allow our kids this summer, kind of as a pilot, kind of as a first time, let's see how it goes, to allow them to keep their Chromebooks over the summer. Obviously, not seniors, because they're graduating, but these kids that are in eighth grade through left. So obviously, we have a lot of, well, we anticipate more than normal kids taking credit recovery courses here at Clay. We know there's going to be enrichment courses offered by staff this summer. So there's, and there's always, every summer, other unique situations where kids are taking CCP courses and other things that we're doing onesies and twosies and those types of things. So the upside is, kids have their devices, right? The upside is, they can continue to do whatever they need to do on them. The downside is, is we have a number of kids every year that don't come back to Clay High School, right? And so the downside is, will we get these things back? And I guess we'll get, there's no doubt we'll get the vast majority of these back. We, there's no doubt about that. But we just don't know what percentage may or may not, and what extra effort we're gonna have to do. But we'll never know unless we give them that trust and give them that opportunity.
What's the percentage, how do they do not come back to the ministry?
Well, we've never allowed devices.
No, no, that's just like.
Oh, oh, gosh. I don't have that number, but I think Jim even mentioned it might even be around every year, there's like 50 kids at Clay that transfer out. I mean, we might get 75 transfer in, but it's this big, I can get there. That's, I didn't.
Well, that number is very small.
Yeah.
I would say a much larger than, if we're talking under 100 people.
Yeah, I think it's definitely.
That's a hundred with the amount of computers that we have.
Yeah, I agree. And you're talking about a device that right now, the new ones that we purchased were about $325. So it's not the 900 to 1100 that a MacBook used to cost. Not that that $300 is, you know, throwaway money. It's not at all, but it's certainly worth it. So anyways, I want to bring that to you, because that's our intent. Unless there's a, you know, a big concern by any of you that we shouldn't go down that road, we'd like to give it a shot this summer. And then we've even had discussions that other districts are doing. Do we, do we come up with a program where they get it as a freshman and keep it till they're senior and keep it, take it home, right? You've heard that. Other districts have done that. And so we're kind of going that way in our mindset. So we're gonna, we'll know more about, we'll make that decision in the fall, like, you know what I mean? Like if that's what we want to do with these incoming folks. And again, there's pros and cons to that, because you're ordering, you know, devices all the time. You know, every year, you're ordering devices. So given what we just experienced, getting devices can be tricky sometimes. Typically not, but anyways. And then one last thing on that, good news that Don just shared with me earlier today, is we may have the opportunity to get the devices we just ordered not too long ago, 1,800 of them, which is what we ended up buying. Is that right? Correct? Yeah, like next week, maybe. In two weeks.
I'm not saying anything until.
Yeah, Don, anyways. It's not gonna be the worry that it may not come in next fall, which is what we were hoping. Not gonna, when I probably just chased it, but.
They're showing that they have some in stock, but what we don't know is where we are in the list of who gets them. So that's the unknown right now. So fingers crossed that we're at the top of the list.
Anyways, that was a hopeful thought, I guess. All right, thank you for that. So that's what that's about. And just last but not least, we will be announcing next week the winners of our annual Employees of the Year. And if you remember, over the, probably the last, this is the fifth year, I believe, we give a Teacher of the Year, we give a Support Staff Employee of the Year, and we give an Administrator of the Year, along with the quarterly winners that have won all through the year, fully sponsored by the Keller family, Tom and Jackie and Jeff and Lisa. And they provide $2,700 every year for us to give these monetary awards to these individuals. So we know the names. I know the names. We're waiting on the hardware, and then we will announce it in the last week of school next week. So I'm very excited about that. And then, you know, had we been able to do this quicker, we would have invited them to the board meeting. And we may still, over the summer, invite them to the board meeting. And then we'll certainly do something in front of the whole staff on opening day next year. So I'm very excited about that. And again, thank you to the Keller family for keeping this alive and for providing that support. They're wonderful people. That's my report. Unless there's questions?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, do we have any old business, anyone? I'm old, but. Committee reports. Finance, Jeff is not here, and I don't think they had a meeting. Capital improvements, I think that was covered with your. Policy personnel, thank you. We have no new ones.
We will have policy next month.
Naturalist meeting.
Nope, nope, next month.
Executive?
We did not meet, no report.
I do know that there will be summer school all the way around.
Yep. Got everyone? Yes.
Legislative?
Nothing.
Student achievement?
Nothing.
Or discussion? I'm just grateful for everyone through this whole COVID year. This has just been an unusual thing in my 50 years in education. It's absolutely phenomenal what they were able to do.
And just because you brought that up, I've been getting a lot of questions about what, given this expiration of health orders on June 2nd, what does that mean? I've already addressed graduation, so we're gonna have to live with some. But what it means in our schools, and I'm pretty confident the vast majority of Lucas County schools are going to make the masks optional for like summer activities or things that are going on. I'm gonna probably recommend that as well internally over the summer. None of us can predict the fall, but my guess is that there won't be any health orders in place come the fall, and we will be able to move forward with traditional school with masks optional for staff and for kids and distancing the normal way we go about with schools. And hopefully, that the quarantine, I mean, right now, it's June 2nd, there'll be no quarantine orders. Everything is, will be eliminated in the state of Ohio. So the quarantine part has been the most frustrating, I think, for everyone, because it's impacted so many people. So anyways, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Any need for an executive decision? Okay, announce on our special and regular meetings, I have June 15th at 6 o'clock for the next regular meeting. May I, June 15th? I could be wrong.
Third, the third thing is the, no, it's, the first is a Thursday, so it's the 15th.
Yep. The first is on the Tuesday.
Yep, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Oh, I wish, thank you.
And we might, we might need one on June 29th, just a special, you know how we do that sometimes? We might, if it's necessary.
Well, we'll worry about that later, but. I was just gonna say, you'll have to let us know, Jean. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second?
Second.